The town of Kent zoning board of appeals. Regular meeting Tuesday, January 12th, 2021. Present for this evening are Anthony Dipentima, Nick Downs, Daniel Murray, and Patricia Oris. Patricia is an alternate. I will elevate her to voting status. So therefore, we have a quorum. Has anybody reviewed the minutes of December 8?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the December 8, 2020 meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And your discussion?
No.
Hearing none? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. The motion carries unanimously.
Can you do the acceptance of the agenda with just number three?
Oh. Oh, you know, I don't have that. Okay, is there a motion to accept the agenda?
Move to accept the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second?
Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, I will recess the meeting. We will hear application 0121. Stacy J. Spence, 237 Bullsbridge Road. Relief from section 4241 side yard setback for an addition to a pre-existing non-conforming use. Will the applicant and whoever or whomever is going to speak with or for the applicant, please identify themselves.
Do you need to unmute, Stacy?
What is it so? Hi, it's Stacy Spence. How are you guys?
Okay, and Mr. Greenberg? Greenbaum, I'm sorry.
Stan Greenbaum, 247 Bullsbridge Road.
Alrighty. 247?
Right.
So you are an abutting neighbor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, in preparation of this evening's hearing, did you send out certified mail to abutting neighbors?
I didn't. The applicant did, and we got echo of the green card, so we're all set.
Are there any objections to the application by any of the abutting neighbors?
No.
Alrighty, thank you.
Nothing written.
Nothing written?
Nothing written.
Anything expressed orally?
No, not to me.
All right, Ms. Grimsley. Despite the problems with COVID and the difficulties of Zoom, this is an informal hearing. So we will just simply ask you to please, as succinctly as you can, please state the relief that you are seeking and explain why you feel that an expansion of a non-conforming use is acceptable and under these circumstances.
Sure. So I purchased 235 Bullsbridge Road. The cottage was part of that purchase. It's uninhabitable the way it stands right now. And what we'd like to do is add a little less than 200 square feet off the back of the existing structure. Right now, the reason we're meeting with you guys is because we don't we don't have that 25-foot setback from the west, which is Stan Greenbaum's property, 247. So we would like to have a variance so that we can actually put on that little bit of an addition so that we can have two bedrooms and a bathroom and make it a livable, inhabitable space. We need to actually put we actually have to put a foundation in underneath one part of the existing structure right now does not have a foundation, so that has to be put in to make it safe. So we thought, since we have to do that anyway, that we would just add a little bit more off the back to make it more of a living space. And that's basically all we're doing. I don't want to change the front of the cottage. Everybody seems to know it and love it. We don't really have the room to go from the east side of the cottage because of a well situation, which is only nine feet off of the east side of the cottage. So we would definitely need to go back. We can't really even go front, and I don't want to build up, so that's what we're trying to achieve here.
All right, I will start off the questioning. I drove past your cottage this afternoon. And I understand that it is empty and appeared to be empty from my observation. Can you explain to me why you can't use the structure it currently exists without an expansion?
The structure is a current re-exist, it's a sick house right now, so it all has to be, everything has to be torn out of it, including all the mechanicals. We did find that we have a cesspool in the front of the house, in front of the cottage, so we actually went and did a septic system behind the cottage to make it a two-bedroom septic, which was approved by Kathy Weber at Torrington Area Health. So we the way the cottage is set up right now is the kitchen is on a space that probably used to be some kind of a porch, so there's no foundation underneath the kitchen. So that whole part has to come off, and a foundation has to be put on there to make it habitable. We can't even kind of even go in the door because it's well under six feet as you go into the back of the house. So the way the cottage is set up, it's kind of set up like an L, so it's a very difficult space to actually live in comfortably. So we kind of felt like if we could just square it off the back, which would just take us to where the deck is off the back of the property, which only gives it's on the east side, it would be eight and a, less than eight and a half feet from the existing structure now. And then it would go across the back of the structure, which is exactly the way the dimensions of the front of the structure, and then just add 14 feet off of the west side. And that would make it, that would kind of make it a rectangle, which would make it a much easier space to inhabit and really kind of much more comfortable. I don't, I don't want to I don't want to change the structure so that it doesn't look like the cottage that everybody knows it is. But to be able to make this, you know, kind of usable, I mean, 600 square feet is not a very big space to inhabit. But we kind of figured that it would, that would be a nice, small, little, you know, apartment for somebody or cottage for somebody.
Do you understand that simply seeking an increase in livability space and additional comfort is not necessarily a hardship that would allow this commission, given the strict prohibition of expansion of non-conforming use? Can you tell me what you really think is the is the rather peculiar hardship that would allow us to to allow for an expansion of a non-conforming use under these conditions?
Well, we would have to, we have to fix the house anyway. I mean, it has to be fixed. It's not inhabitable, and I didn't I wasn't able to buy 235 without also purchasing 237. And so the only thing I can do is just kind of let it go to seed, unless I can make it a situation where I can rent it out to either family member or, you know, somebody else. Otherwise, it's a space that can't be it can't be used. We have, you know, mold, things like that, so it has to be whether we can do it, whether we can make it bigger or not, it has to be fixed.
Man, inquire, my inquire when you purchased the property?
September 30th of this year.
And it was sold as-is?
As-is.
And you were aware that it was a pre-existing non-conforming use?
Actually, I was not aware of that. I didn't know anything about this whole situation until we started working on the septic system for 235. And the person who was doing our septic informed me that we weren't just going to be able to go and and do anything to this house, that we actually had to go to you guys and make an application and try to figure out what we needed to do, so I had no idea. And then we also, we just assumed that, which was obviously wrong on our part, that there's a little grass driveway to the west side, which we thought was part of the property because Stan's got a, you know, they have a fence that runs on the other side of that little grass property. So we thought that that was part of the cottage property, which actually the realtor told us it was. And then having conversations with Donna and seeing the plans that Brian Nefted for our septic system, we realized that that's not even, that's not part of our property, so that's the issue with this very
The 235 is your main residence?
Yes.
Alrighty, and this is an ancillary structure that you wish to rehabilitate?
Well, this is actually on its own lot. It's its own
Right, it's its own lot, right.
Yes, I would like to do that.
Do any commissioners wish to make inquiry?
And the non-conformity is on the, I guess it would be the southern side of that piece of property?
It's on the west side.
That's Mr. Greenberg's, Greenbaum's side, correct?
I guess some
Mr. Greenbaum, do you wish to say anything, Mr. Greenbaum?
Yeah, I'd like to get some clarification, please. What is the current setback on the west side?
20, 20 feet, I believe.
Okay, now, there's also a porch on the back of, on the south side of the building. And my understanding that essentially what Stacy was looking to do was to use substantially the same footprint that the porch already occupies. Is that correct, Stacy?
Yeah, I'd like to do to the end of the porch and then square it off in the back, so on your side, we would add that 14-foot to the back of the prop, to the back of the cottage, and then square it off.
So there's already a structure. You're not going further back than the existing porch?
No.
So there really is not an increase in the non-conformity on the west side? The difference is that you're going to put a, you're going to enclose that porch as opposed to having as an open porch?
Right.
Well, it's still an encroachment to the side yard. I'm sorry.
Well, isn't that considered a pre-part of the pre-existing encroachment?
Stay again, I'm sorry, Mr. Greenbaum.
You've got a porch that extends off the back of the house.
Correct.
And that porch is along the same line as the structure itself, as the cottage. So at no point does the porch become closer. And what she's proposing is to enclose that porch, basically. Now, the interior footprint, the interior division of space would change, but the exterior would be substantially the same, from what I understand, to what the porch plus the cottage is presently.
Well, I suspect I'm not seeing any any porch in any of my diagrams here.
So basically where the
Dan, I think it's this dotted area. Donna, am I correct?
That's all porch?
No.
I don't know. Is that
The porch is, if you extend that line where the let's see, where the
Where 14, and then you have a number crossed off?
Yep, so that line right there, if you go straight up, that's the porch.
Okay.
And then if you follow that heavy line straight up, that's porch. From that heavy line on the south side, straight up, that's porch. That's our porch. So what we wanted to do is add 14 feet on the west side of the property, because right now it's kind of like a weird little L, it's like a bump out. We wanted to add 14 feet off of the back of the west side of the property and then come straight across to match where the porch is, so we would make basically just square the whole back of the cottage off.
Right, but Stacy, what I'm asking
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Hold on for a second, because of Zoom, everyone's talking over one another. Let me, can I just let me just point, Patricia, you want to make a point first?
Yeah, basically, we're adding 14 feet of non-conforming wall, which is nine feet from the other property. So that dotted line on the right side of your drawing is the extension of the non-conforming wall of the cottage.
Yes.
That was my understanding as well. Dan, do you wish to say anything?
I'm still not clear with what Mr. Greenbaum said. If I understood Mr. Greenbaum correctly, it sounded as if everything that was being added to the structure is already part of the footprint as it exists now.
Yeah, that's the way I heard him, yeah.
That's my understanding.
But I don't see any of that in these diagrams.
Mr. Greenbaum, do you wish to respond, please?
Well, I was wondering if Donna couldn't put this up as a screen share so you can all see the drawing.
I'll try.
We all have our own drawings, sir.
Well, we all have it. We all have it right here. Let me do a close-up.
Okay, so which side is the driveway? Which side is the west side?
Stan, the west side is, if you're looking at the picture at the drawing, it's on the right side, so where that 14 feet is going to be added, that's your side.
So the dotted line that you're showing on there, that is the perimeter of the existing porch?
That is, well, no, that's where we want to bring the back of the cottage to where the existing porch would be if it was all the way across.
Okay, so
And that goes to Patricia's point.
It's not all the way across.
That goes to Patricia's point.
Where is the existing porch now?
The existing porch is, it's right where the, where the that heavy line is, where the 11 foot 8 inches, it's right there, so it's basically half of the back of the house.
Okay, so the existing porch would, is, if you squared off the dark line there, you'd get a seven foot 10 inch plus about eight feet, you know, to make, that would square off the back.
Yes.
And you add another roughly 10, 7 or 10 feet to the back of the existing porch plus kitchen.
Yep. So basically, it just pushes the cottage out toward, to the to the back of the porch. It just pushes the whole thing back.
Well, but then to address Patricia's point, it is an expansion because you're going beyond the existing footprint.
Right.
That's what I was unclear about.
Right.
All right, okay, just so we're clear, all right.
So the increase in the non-conformity is the additional eight feet or whatever it is on the back, because the footprint already covers more than half of the space that we're talking about.
The porch, the porch covers about maybe 13 feet of that. And then the rest is open towards your side.
Stacy is 235, the house on the corner. The house abutting, this cottage.
Yeah, if you drive, if you're driving if you're driving east on Bullsbridge Road, you have the cottage, and then the house is right next to it, it's a white little ranch.
Oh, so it's not the house on the corner of Route 7?
That's my house.
Okay.
No, it's farther up. So, Mr. Greenbaum, then, do you have an objection?
No. I think that it would actually be an improvement to the appearance of the cottage from my viewpoint on the west side of the property.
All right. Nick, do you wish to make a comment? I'm going to call on the commissioners individually so we don't overlap each other.
Yeah, I mean, clearly, it's an increase of the non-conformity. I guess I'm just sort of struggling to see the the hardship as it is written in the regs of zoning board of appeals and the the state zoning regs, and that's where I'm at. I'm struggling to see that hardship. I know it seems like a great idea and everything else, but that book we have to go by says, you know, we can't do something to increase the non-conformity and that aesthetics and other things are not considered hardships, unfortunately.
Just a point of clarification, please?
Yes.
If Stacy were to enclose the if she were, at the point where the deck, the porch presently ends, if that then went five feet to the east, she would then have 25 feet for any addition that she had on the south side of the building. So if her addition was to enclose the existing porch and to put on an addition that was five feet further east and also went south, that would be within the regulations.
I believe it would be, correct.
But you're still increasing the size of the non-conformity.
Right, right.
The square footage.
It doesn't matter where you go.
Right, she can't go on that side because that's where the well is.
Oh, that's right.
Can you go back? The, if you look at the L, the 14-foot wide L, can you extend that 14 feet back?
Well, that's what we're trying, that's what, oh, you mean that on the
Yeah, don't square it off, continue with an L-shaped footprint going back, because you have a lot of space at the back of the property.
Well, we, I'm not sure if we can, because that, we have a very small piece of property, and we had to put the septic there. So now there's an issue with having, you know, setbacks for the septic and how far you can do drainage and all that kind of stuff. We're also, the cottage actually sits up on a hill, so right
I saw, I live not far, I drove by and checked it out.
Kind of to make it even farther out, we would now be on, we would have to grade that hill down a lot to make that work, and I'm not even sure if we'd be able to do that because of where the septic is now, because that was really, really tight to get that septic in there. That's why we were trying to figure out if we could do it on the other side. And to speak to, like, the hardship of this, it's a livable structure, you know, it's a structure that's supposed to be lived in, and by today's standards, it's not livable. I mean, you have, once you put in a kitchen, that actually is a kitchen, because right now it's like a hot plate and a little refrigerator. Once you actually put in a kitchen, you will not have room to actually live in this space. You would not be able to do that. It would be like a hotel room, and I'm not I don't want to do any kind of bed and breakfast or Airbnb. I want somebody stable to live there, whether it's my mom or it's somebody else. And right now, it's way too small to actually inhabit. You know, we, my brother and I went in there together, and it's very tight for two people to be in that space together, so I understand that what I'm asking for is something that goes against regulations, and I'm not trying to do it to make money. I'm trying to make the house be someplace that can be livable and not just sort of let it go, you know, to seed, because I really I kind of love it, it's, you know, people really like that little space, and it would be, you know, it's been around since 1920. And, you know, it's just, it's not like we're trying to put in, you know, a five-bedroom house. We just want to make it a little bit bigger so that it's you know, first of all, we have to change the roof anyway, because the way the roof is slanted, you can't get into the back of the house if you're over, you know, 5'9". So it's just, there's a lot of things that have to happen to it, and there's a lot of money that has to be spent to do it, and I understand that that's not part of this. But, you know, in order to do this, even if we go back from the deck, we're still going to be it's still going to be adding to it. And I think that if maybe if Stan doesn't have an objection to this, because he's right next to me, that maybe there's a way that we can, you know, kind of, you know, do this. I mean, I don't know if, you know, I don't know.
I found something in the book that says a hardship resulting from a peculiar topography or condition of the land or a
Exactly.
or a particular location which makes the property unsuitable for the use permitted in the zone in which it lies may well be such a hardship as is contemplated by the ordinance.
Yeah, that's true. Case law says that, but I'm not sure that this is this particular case. I don't know whether topography is such that that this qualifies for that exception, but I'm certainly willing to willing to entertain it if commissioners want to
It says it's particular location which makes the property unsuitable for the use permitted in the zone.
But it's not unsuitable. It's not unsuitable for use.
If you were to take this house and move it and put it in the middle of a five-acre lot, I still don't think the house would be livable.
It's not livable. You can't, it's smaller than a small hotel room.
I think you can make the topography argument because the lot is unique. In comparison, Tom Brady wants to join us. The lot is unique in comparison to the neighboring lots. It is very narrow. It is very small. I've always, I've always leaned towards allowance of a variance such as this in the past. I think the, I think that the homeowner has has a need. And the variance would be on the west side of the property where where there is already an established non-conformity. It's not increasing the non-conformity, it's increasing the size, but by a small amount. And so I I tend to feel that the variance should be granted.
Okay, let's do this. Dan, those comments are certainly suitable for our discussion in terms of our making a deliberation for the purposes right now. Do any commissioners wish to ask any further questions of the applicant before we go back into our hearing? And then Dan's comments will be considered in terms of a motion offered by one of the members. Are there any other comments for the applicant?
No.
All right, hearing none. Mr. Greenbaum, do you wish to say anything further?
What is the front yard setback required there?
Front yard? 70?
40 feet.
20 feet?
40, 40 feet. The required setback is 40 feet from the front, 30 from the rear and sides.
Under 4241?
Yeah, when you look at the, it's because it's the rural district. The setbacks for the rural district are 40 feet from the front, 30 from the rear and sides.
Well, I'm looking under the business hamlet, because she said section 4241 on her application.
Did we change that? Did we change the setbacks on the business hamlet? Okay, no, you're probably right, Tony, then.
All right, let's all get on the same page. Does everybody have the new reg, section 4241?
No.
Let me see if I can find them.
All right, yeah, why don't you take a minute, because we don't want to we want to make sure that our analysis is correct here.
Roadside commercial zone used to be only 400 feet deep from Route 7.
Yeah, we changed, we got rid of the roadside commercial, and we created the business hamlet.
Well, the business hamlet says minimum side yard is 20 feet.
Right. And what about the front?
Front is 75.
Right.
Rear is 30.
Side yard is 20.
So if the side yard is 20, then there's no non-conformity here on the side.
Yeah, she's nine feet from the property.
Nine feet, yeah.
Nine feet, nine feet.
You want to do a lot line or something? Can you squeeze a couple of feet out of that property, or? I don't know. That would censure it right there.
All right, so everybody, we have the right section, okay? All right, if there are no other questions for the applicant, I will close this hearing. And I will And I will reconvene the meeting and we can take up this application. If anybody wishes to offer a motion or comments before a motion, feel free to do so.
Just to be clear, as a neighboring property owner to the west, I am in support of Stacy's application.
So noted. Thank you, Mr. Greenbaum. Does any member of the board wish to offer a motion on this application? Dan, do you wish to?
Sure. Like to make a motion to approve the variance number oh-one dash two-one.
Second.
Finding that, say again?
It was seconded. It was seconded by Patricia.
Okay, and, and finding a hardship of topography, the uniqueness of the lot in comparison to the surrounding lots, finding that it is, it will be in the general harmony and the intent of the, of local zoning. And the extension of the non-conformity is, is, is still the same. It's still the encroachment on the west side, which doesn't increase that encroachment. We're only increasing the volume. And I, I know that that can be argued both ways. Anyone else?
Well said. Uh, Mr. Murphy has made a motion and it's been seconded by Ms. Orvis. Is there any further discussion on Mr. Murray's motion? Or does any commissioner wish to add an addendum to Mr. Murray's offer, uh, uh, motion? Hearing none. We'll take a vote. Let me take a vote individually so we don't step on each other. Dan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Patricia?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
I, uh, I think Dan's motion was very well put and I think a very credible justification. However, it's not one that I can accept. However, I will vote no with the motion carries. Your application is approved. You have, you have fifteen days and, uh, when you receive notice, in order for us to publish this before you can do anything to the property.
Okay.
Alrighty, well, congra, congratulations.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it. Thank you, Stan.
Okay, I'll talk to you later.
Okay, take care.
All right. Do we have any old business, Donna?
Nope.
Do we have any new business?
Nope.
Do we have any communications?
Nope.
Then I move to adjourn. Stay safe, everyone.
Good night. Stay safe.
Home.
Good night.
That, what's Tom Brady? How, how, where's, where's my autograph?
Yeah, where's that?
Who the hell is Tom Brady?
I don't know. It was actually coming up.
Hey, listen, you, you, you let Alina in on this.